I mean, we're not, cause I mean, the. Can you, it's, it's.
Maybe sure, yeah. I mean, there's so much shit to look at while, you know. Yeah.
I'm like, but I don't know what.
I was thinking about that when I was reading it, I'm like, I could look it up, but I don't know. Here you go, yes. Thank you, I'm sorry.
If I can share, I, I need papers.
You'd say report someplace where it says.
It does say that it's hard life. He provides him as a.
I hate, I have three.
Video on this thing? Okay, we're not.
And once we're live, it's automatically. It's funny.
For, for all.
We're on some.
It's Chinese.
Everybody okay on agendas and everything? What's that?
Yeah, agendas.
I don't have one.
They're supposed to give me one?
Yeah, printed one, so I can keep track of.
There you go. I got it.
And then Graham.
Graham, you will.
Nope.
You want to put some, all your thing in?
Well, there was a little schoolgirl softball games, I don't know if that's. Jamie has a daughter playing, and I take it? I don't know if she's going, but.
All right, well. No, he's going to slavery.
Yeah, we got the rookies tonight in charge, so go be slow and speak clearly. And we hope to do it right.
All right, it is five oh two. I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time. I just, we want to please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, which stands by my nation under God. All right. Before we move on to approve the agenda. I would like to add. Uh, we'll go under new business, it will be. Letter. S. Sorry. And it'll be, uh. Entrance, uh. Detailed decisions. You, I have a motion to approve the agenda. Uh, with the amendment to it. Good, second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Peggy Segway. Sorry, first time I've done it. Always segmented by Katie. All those in favor, I opposed. Okay. All right. At this time, we're looking for any comments from the public. Anyone? Moving on. Treasures report for May twenty twenty five.
I'll make the motion to approve the treasure.
Uh, we have a motion by Katie. Segmented by Eric. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I opposed. All right. Presidents record, or reporter correspondence, I don't have. Uh, much this week, I'm glad everyone made it back safe from the Disney trip and whatnot, and. Uh, I appreciate the cancelling of the marching and the. Crazy heat we had for the parade the other day, cause those poor kids would have roasted alive. Um, aside from that, uh, just to make note on the agenda, we have no closed meet, or no closed portion of this meeting tonight. We are trying to, uh, resolve a lot of those issues through committee meeting. Um, so if anyone is wondering why, that's why.
How did you get notified there wasn't marching?
Posted on Facebook, I guess.
Yeah, I had it too. We weren't around though, but good to know.
Um, moving on. Superintendent, SSA, or sorry, SAA State Budget Update.
So, um, just to comment on that, uh, they were practicing out here Friday, getting ready for the parade, I mean, they were all set to go, so I'm great. And Ms. P was, uh, marching with them, so. Just so you're aware, they were here working and they did a couple of segments, they were great, so. Um, so what I tried to put in your, uh, package for you guys is the latest, so we have AEF in there. Um, they are kind of our lobbyists working towards the legislature, so everything that comes in through, I try to keep up, so I got another one today. Things, um, I'll just read to you what, what, uh, I got in the SAA update today. Uh, last week, the Joint Finance Committee abruptly canceled its scheduled vote on several majority agency budgets. Signaling a breakdown in the budget process. No rescheduled date has been announced and clear signs of an impasse have emerged between legislative leaders. Uh, in the days following the cancellation, lawmakers released statements suggesting that Assembly Republicans. Have been working with Governor Evers' office in pursuit of a compromise, however. Progress has been undermined by divisions within the Senate Republican Caucus. So look, that's kinda where we're at right now, we're just standing pat, I mean, there's a lot more to this communicate with us, essentially the. The gist of where we're at now. But that's what I have on the state budget at this point.
I was on an advocacy call today and they said, the good thing about this is. Now everybody has a chance, if you haven't already called your legislators to tell them to pass it, call your legislators.
And I wanna echo that too, because every time, so I don't know if you get it, but I get calls to action. So every time I do it, I do send an email and I get one from Wasby and I get one from Wasda, so I can kind of double up. So yeah, so. If you guys have the opportunity, you probably get some too, I mean, it just, it helps, so. Do you get communicate back?
I get stuff from the Wisconsin Early Childhood Association of Wisconsin and the Wisconsin Head Start Association, but they are echoing the same things.
I don't always get something back from the legislators though. I sometimes do, but sometimes not always, so that's. I would expect something.
I usually do get something, but it seems like it's delayed and it's just a thank you for.
Yes. Very general.
Yes.
Definitely hoping things go in schools' direction, because. I don't know if anyone else has seen it, but they're already having campaigns at the gas pumps. Saying that the schools are going to raise their property taxes if they don't get funded through the state, so. Basically looking at, uh, having to deal with that in the future, if the state doesn't do something better to help out the schools. So. Thank you, Kevin. Anything else for? All right, moving on, portion of the principles, this is Herman, AGR End of the Year Report.
Um, AGR is Achievement Gap Reduction. And that is, um, it used to be called Sage. Um, that is our classrooms eighteen and below, and that's how we. For grades K through three, eighteen and below. And then we also have the option to. Check two more boxes, which is one-to-one tutoring, which I don't check that box. And then the other box is, um. Utilizing Title One to go in and, and push into the room and work with teachers. And so each, twice a year, I have to come to the board and just let you know that. Our AGR report is done and that we are, and that I'm ready to submit it. And then Tom, uh, signs off on the sheet that goes in with it, so just kind of updating everyone what this is. So you can see, um. Looking at our numbers, um, I did a comparison with last, um, January, February's numbers when I reported out. And I don't have that comparison in here, I apologize. But our end of the year, um. Was a little bit lower in the reading than I had hoped for, looking at our mid-year report when we did. And so, um. I don't know what to attribute that to. Um. But I'm gonna be looking at that a little more closely at our PLCs with those grade levels. To see kind of where we fell at what point in the year and how we can make sure we boost that point of the year coming up. I was pleased by the math numbers. Um, math is consistently going up. This'll be year four this fall of our new math curriculum. And based on numbers here, I would say that. We picked the right curriculum for our students. Um. CKLA, our reading, we will be going into, um. Our third year with CKLA, so I'm hoping that that will. Change a few things, I think part of the reason we fell in reading. Is because we were in that Ames Web like chaos of. Trying to test Ames Web and Fast Bridge, cause Ames Web is for the state, for Act Twenty. Plus, we were doing Fast Bridge, so. Teachers were learning how to navigate Ames Web, the new platform. And also trying to figure out. How things aligned with what they were already doing for CKLA. These objectives, um, will change next fall, because I just submitted our new contract. For AGR, so once we sit at the table in our PLCs, then these objectives could very well change. Um, we probably won't go with Ames Web benchmarks with the state. Because we're still doing Fast Bridge and we still have our local data that we use in the classrooms.
On those objectives?
Yes.
So they, they're very straightforward, you know, a student will recognize twenty-six uppercase letters. But it doesn't have how many students, I know we probably would love to have a hundred percent. But are, how do we gauge these percentages as, are we? Doing what we thought we would actually do?
Okay, so I, we'll wanna have that a little more clarified on the.
Yeah, well, that's seventy, seventy percent is what happened, but is our goal that ninety-five percent of students will get? Twenty-six uppercase and twenty-six lower, or is sixty-five percent?
Typically, we strive for eighty percent always of our students, because that's, that's. RTI is eighty-twenty.
Right.
Um, so we strive for eighty percent, and in the. In the, um, January, they had reported eighty percent and they reported it out. More with each of them, so eighty percent of the kindergartners already recognize. And then seventy-five percent of the kindergartners recognize the lowercase, and then ninety-five percent of them. Were able to produce the sounds, and so that's why.
Sure, that's how you're getting the seventy, I, but I, I, if, if I go, eighty's our benchmark, that's helpful to then say. Some are lower than eighty, some are higher.
Yep.
Cause hundred percent is obviously gonna be.
Okay.
Hard, but it, it looks like how the objectives are written out, it's just. We will make sure every student does that, so anytime we're not hitting a hundred percent, it doesn't look like we're meeting the goal.
Okay.
You're not meeting the objective, whereas it is a hundred percent.
Yeah, I wanna give good measurable and achievable objectives.
Yes. And we don't, um. I mean, our specialized students are involved in this also, we don't exclude any of those people, students either, so. Anyway.
Is that objective ours or the state's?
These are our objectives, that. That's why you were saying that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that the staff have created.
I was gonna ask if they were the states, but then you said we're putting new ones in, so. They might have to say that came from the state either.
All four grades have seen a, a little bit of decline towards the spring?
In the reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I figured you, that's where you were kind of like.
Yeah.
Staying, but I just wanted to clear that.
Yeah, I, I, if, when I did that comparison, I was like. I don't know if they reported differently than they had, but it. It's. Based on what we saw on local data also, that we looked at at our last data day, I would say that, yes, these are probably correct in that reading piece, so. We'll make some changes and, and see where we land again, and.
I mean, I feel, I'm a firm person with the reading, it's a lot of it, we really need to be doing, I mean, push, obvi- obviously, we're pushing for kid, parents to do it at home, but.
Absolutely.
A lot of it, I mean, I can attest for myself with my, gonna be fifth grader, it's, he needs to do more at home.
Yeah.
And then if, um, will the objectives match up with the, with the terminology, so instead of sight words? You have sight word under objective, you have tricky words under.
Yes, yeah, so once we make the new objectives, we have to use the same ones for five years. Because that's where the contract is at, so then. That's why we, we keep using the same, even though it's the tricky and the sight words, yeah. Any other questions?
Are we looking at any, it seems like third grade is the one that's having the biggest struggle here. Of all, most of them, I mean, they basically go, the scores drop from third grade, you go younger from there. Um, they go, or from third grade down, they go up, but. Third grade seems to be the one that's struggling the most currently.
Yes, and so that's one of the reasons that I decided to keep two teachers at that. Fourth grade level next year is to make sure that they were still separated.
And it's not just. Third grade, but that current class that's in third grade that's now moving to fourth, you saw difficulties with them. In the past, yeah, okay.
And I would really like to see some better results.
We would too.
So maybe we need to put our thinking hats on as to. Changing some things, kind of, we're doing the same thing and we're getting. Worse or same poor results, what's the point of doing it then?
I think too, though, as, you know, you follow those cohorts through. Um, you find that there are groups that are going to be. Lower overall too, um, at least that's what I've seen in my thirty years. Um. Yes, we've got some things we're gonna have to do a little differently and. Gives me good PLC content.
Where's our results for the fourth and the fifth?
They are not AGR.
Okay.
AGR is only kindergarten through third grade.
But what else, what is the, what would there be equivalent to AGR to?
Oh, okay, um, that would be their Fast Bridge data and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Gary and regards to this? Ms. Campbell, SEL Coach Update.
Yeah, so, um, this was our first year implementing the, um, social emotional learning coach. Which was part of the Stronger Connections Grant, so part of Natalie Doran's position here is, um, in that role as a coach. Um, so I had the pleasure of meeting with her, um, last week, um, for quite a while, to go over like end of year stuff. Um, and she just had some great things to share, and so I just thought I would report out on some of how, how some of that went and some of the things that teachers. Um, appreciated, and then some of the things that we're looking forward to for next year, because we will have the same position next year. Um, for sure, because we have the Stronger Connections Grant for two years. Um, so basically, the, um, SEL coaching efforts were focused on strengthening teacher understanding and implementation of that SEL. Um, so the social emotional learning strategies with individualized support and then classroom-based observations. And the goal was building teacher capacity and applying those practical trauma-informed SEL practices. To help with student engagement and then emotional regulation and classroom climate. So the overall process is that, um. Number one, she is a peer coach, so she works with the staff, um, on a peer-to-peer basis, it's not. Um, she's not observing them for evaluative purposes or whatever, but just there as someone to help out with things. Um, so she would have a pre-observation consult, um, mostly with new teachers in the district, so everyone that had less than three years of teaching. Um, we require that they would work through these coaching cycles with her, and then our veteran staff had the opportunity to, if they wanted to. Um, and then she would do a classroom observation, um, she could collect data or whatever, based on what that teacher was looking for assistance with, and then one post, um, observation consultation. So some of the things that teachers requested were, um, tips and help for. Stress management and self-care for both staff and students, de-escalation and calming strategies, things to help with work-life balance, um, and lifestyle wellness. Uh, classroom management, goal-setting, and then the social emotional competency skill buil- building. And then, um, integrating SEL daily into structured time. Um, some really great quotes from staff that were surveyed was that it was really nice to be able to talk and brainstorm together about these classroom strategies and challenges. Um, the links that she shared were really quick, effective, realistic and fun. Um, she, someone said that they really enjoyed a lot of the calming resources that they went over. Um, and appreciated her willingness to come into the classroom and learn from us and then teach us different perspectives, and then someone else said SEL from Ms. Doran is refreshing. And reassuring that we're all in this together. So those were just things that our staff had brought up. Um, so some needs for next year, they had a lot of great, um, ideas about ways that we can improve next year. And then she was able to come back, kind of, meeting with us to say, like, these are some things that the staff might feel like would help. So we'll be looking further into these strategies. Um, one thing that, uh, just for the board to keep in mind, in those that participated in one of her surveys. Um, some key findings, so among our staff, and this is K twelve. Um, emotional and physical exhaustion, eighty-eight point nine percent of the respondents reported experiencing emotional or physical exhaustion. So made that the most prevalent concern for teaching staff. Um, seventy-seven point eight percent, um, indicated that there was difficulty maintaining a work-life balance or experiencing symptoms of burnout. And then, um, physical symptoms of stress with sixty-one point one percent, so those were the highest levels of concern. Which we have talked about many times, that number one, teaching in general is a very, um. Strainuous profession, um, teaching here in this district is difficult and our staff need support, so. Um, I'm happy that they feel that the SEL coach is beneficial and that it's going well, and it's something that we would love to see continue. Um, hopefully that we will be able to do that even after the show.
What is her percentage of time with that?
Uh, she's point two, SEL.
Yeah, wouldn't it be great to have somebody more than that?
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a huge need and it has been forever.
Yeah, hundred percent, and so a lot of districts, most bigger districts have, um, an instructional peer coach, and that is the person that. Works primarily with new teachers on like curriculum and design and classroom management and those types of pieces. Um, and we're a pretty small district, so it'd be a little tough for that here, but, um, that's kind of what we modeled this idea off of when we had the grant funding. And then we just did it with the more SEL lens, because. Um, it fit with the grant and then also it's a very high need in our district.
Employee assistance programs in the big schools are.
Yeah.
They're huge.
Yeah.
And HR departments, of course, but.
Yeah.
We're too small to have any of that.
So the grant would cost us anything to harvest it all?
So it's only the point two.
She's only point two, yeah, so that doesn't cost us anything.
What's the likeness that we're gonna get it, is it basically another two, this coming year, we'll put it again for another two years and we'll see if we. Or is it out of this funding source?
I should believe that there is a further option for it.
Oh, so we'd have to look for other funding op- opportunities, so we're basically have one more year of this and then. Okay, cause my next question was gonna kind of be, I mean, I know there should be a bunch of new student, teachers, but, and I didn't know it was only a point two, cause I was questioning like. You know, with some of our veteran teachers, you probably don't wanna do it, but else we wanna make sure she has enough caseload. Too, but of course, the point, you know, she's probably, she obviously has her hands full with, especially with our new staff, so.
She actually had quite a few veterans.
I would expect that.
It did work with her.
I would expect a lot of veterans.
And she approached it as, if nothing else, I would like to come and learn from you all and look at what strategies you use, so that I can bring those back. To other newer teachers or different teachers that might be struggling with things, so she would kind of get a gauge on like who does this really well with. That SEL lens and then be able to bring that back to other people as well.
I don't know if the mental health money will continue that we've had in the past. But if it did, um, what, using a head start, is we have a mental health professional come in once a month. For an eight-hour day, we pay them hourly, and they go into both classrooms briefly. Um, we talk about every child individually, it might just be no concerns, things are great or there's an improvement. And then every staff member has an opportunity to meet with them once a month as well.
Yeah.
It's very nice.
And we do have a full-time, once a week, one full day a week person that is a mental health professional on this grant as well. But they basically work with our highest needs students, um, and that is generally for people that have a hard time. With like insurance deductibles or that type of thing, um, and aren't able to get it otherwise.
So the numbers you gave, the eighty-seven, seventy-eight, sixty, was that pre-SEL or?
Was the end of the school year.
That was the end of the school year, so even with all the SEL stuff, those were the numbers that they were giving.
Now granted, I think it was in the last week of school, so I feel like. If you did it three weeks prior, you might have very different results, but yes.
It'd just be interesting to see these numbers compared like through the year, you know, cause I mean it. A, a program can sound great, but it all depends on how much it's actually helping along. And if we only have it for another year, then we really need to start setting up what's going to be in place of it or what we can develop through it. Um, cause otherwise we've just wasted two years of a grant.
Well, and she is developing like, um, common folders for staff that have all the resources that she's been compiling in it. So people will have that long-term and then just getting a feel for what staff need. And then bringing it back to us to give us better ideas on how to help staff. Um, I think we'll hopefully continue on, but yes, having a position of this sorts in some capacity would be wonderful for the future.
Hopefully they'll be able to use the strategies long-term, but I, by the end of the year, I'm not surprised that they're that high.
Yeah.
And I don't think they lessen throughout the year whether there's an SEL coach or not, I mean, it's just a high burnout.
Yeah.
Position, so.
I'll play just slight devil's advocate, I don't disagree with anything that anyone's saying here, but some of those stress feeling numbers, they're not just from workplace. There are other things that are going on in one's, in one's life. And there, I, I would hate for us to feel like we would have to shoulder the responsibility of handling. Other things that people also need to handle between their health and their finances and the things that go along with it. There's big pieces.
Anything else from Ms. Campbell in regards to SEL Coach Updates? Thank you very much. Moving on, Special Education Director, end of the year wrap-up.
My end of the year, end of the year numbers, um. You can see we started the year with eighty students, we ended with eighty-nine, um. We did have sixteen new evaluations throughout the year resulting in a diagnosed disability and a need for special education services. We had five graduates during the year, um. Few more manifestation meetings than normal. Twenty-six reevaluations this year, so it was a, a big year for reevals. Um. Yes, you can see the numbers there on the special ed side, the homeless, we started the year with no homeless and ended the year with sixteen total.
No reported, no self-reported homeless. Doesn't mean they weren't homeless.
Right.
We worked with the same family, so.
Broad definition.
Yes, it is. Have we started, the open enrollment period is technically over, I know that people open enroll pretty much anytime. Do we know where we're at with open enrollment in and out per fall?
Not yet.
We don't have any idea yet, and I know they don't finalize until August.
Correct.
So we don't have any applications at this point.
And I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't mean just specialized.
No, but I mean.
No, Lisa will know, there's emails coming through right now on that, completing the opening enrollment stuff, and I get them. She gets them and then she needs to comply to things.
Okay, and I know they don't have to choose until.
Right, and the alternate open enrollment period starts July first, I think.
Okay.
So.
Well, as always, with this, of course, uh, like to know. How we're doing on staffing in regards to what we're projecting for needing staffing for next year. Um, if it looks like we're going to be, going to be able to meet that or if we're gonna be struggling to find some more, um. Cause. Wonder if we could have, not necessarily an answer right now, but like the next month or two, it'd be nice to have an answer on possible. Caseloads we're looking at in elementary and, uh, Bill and High School. So, and you'll look at actual numbers that we're dealing with and the staff that'll be addressing them. So.
I was wondering on that, I know that it had become, even before I left, that a lot of people were saying, we don't need a three-year reevaluate, we don't need a three. Reevaluate and that is not necessarily a bad thing, but some of the kids I've noticed. Who are being, getting evaluations outside of the district, there are huge changes. Um, that we maybe didn't anticipate being as significant as they are. Do you think we need to relook at some of that deciding not to do the three-year reevals? In some cases, not at all, I mean, it makes sense where we could keep kids SDD to keep them there.
Yes.
But after that.
Um, so. We have in the past looked at that information and initiated reevaluations earlier than three years. Um, there are a number of students that do get reevaluated every three years, it's on case-by-case basis.
Right.
Um, if we decide at a three-year period that we don't need a reevaluate right now. The next three-year period, we do do a reevaluate, so we don't go any more than.
You don't skip more than.
We don't skip.
Oh, like there are no consecutive.
Absolutely.
Okay, that makes me feel.
We don't do consecutive, we don't skip more than one. It's not fair to the student and the needs of the student, and we try to get them, we try to make really. Try really hard to make sure that we get them like just before they go into middle school or right after they start. And then right away freshman sophomore year in high school, because then we can adjust things as we need to as they're moving through.
I kind of have a random question and I don't, do we ever get families who are like in denial and they're like, my kid doesn't need this? I mean, I'm sure we have families who are pushing for maybe more needs than what the kid like we're evaluating, but I just wonder if it's ever the opposite. You know, you have a parent like sometimes just like in denial, like, I think with the younger.
How could we do for?
Yeah, I would think that, I just wonder as they get older.
We have had, um. Referrals made through the district or actually had a couple out now with the Bridge. School and when parent, they discussed it with parents, parents didn't want the re- the evaluation, so, and that's the right.
Yeah.
And there are kids that don't qualify twice in a row and then they'll qualify the third evaluation and you're like. You know that they're going to down the line, but they're not great at that level.
Well, I think sometimes it's just like understanding the ins and outs, cause I mean, I was dealing with like an autistic kid, like. I don't really know the ins and outs, like, okay, they're medically diagnosed, but then like understanding what is the other, like, uh, school diagnosed, uh, educated. You know, and like, when do I get information on that?
Because at the moment, it's significant developmental delay and that's what she's being serviced on.
Yeah, I just, it's just like the breakdown and like understanding it, so, you know, as a guardian.
And even though the autism diagnosis.
Right, this, yeah.
From one thing to another.
Thanks, Lisa.
Alright, anyone have anything else? Moving on. New American Report, Impact Eight.
Say that between Laura and me, that's analyzed in. It took a while, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, but we are officially done. For this year. So that's all I have.
Do you know roughly how many of our students are, have participated in the ES Pro?
I don't know the numbers, no.
Okay.
Which just starts this week, though, so I mean, they always have applications due at a certain time, but I don't think they actually deny anybody.
All, I usually ask the coordinator for that, um, for all the students and the number of hours that they purchase.
Right, I was just curious, things to do to keep them busy during the summer, you know? Alright, anyone have anything else for? Thank you, moving on. Looking for approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, minutes from May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by Polly, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Looking for approval of the regular, regular school board meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Katie, seconded by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Looking for approval of the special board meeting minutes from June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve those. Second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Polly, all those in favor, or sorry, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, I opposed. Committee of the whole meeting minutes for July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, sorry. Motion by Corey, seconded by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Onto new business. We have the B C P L General Obligation Loan. So, um. Kevin can speak to this more, but this is in regards to that loan option we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting last week. Um, we don't have to sign off on the, on going with the loan at this point. Um, however, if we would want that as an option to be able to have it for this upcoming school year. We have to, uh, get an application submitted. And even once we have the application submitted, even if it's approved, it's still. We still don't have to take it, but at least it would be an option that we could possibly have. Um, and the whole idea behind it is, is if we were to take out this loan, we would no longer. Have the aim of short-term borrowing, basically we'd be borrowing against ourselves. Uh, once again, like with the fund balance, but we'd have to repay this amount, uh. Through the state, uh, fund. Over the next ten years, so Kevin.
Tonight, all I needed, based on the timeline of everything, all I needed tonight was approval from the board to submit an application. And an amount, she did a one million and a two million dollar amount. Um, Laura and I did go through, this was without Baird though. So at this point in time, based on some of the expenditures we had last year that we were going to take out. That we didn't take out, for example, boiler repair was one of them, we should not have a boiler repaired with new boilers this year. So items like that, we did come up with an amount with the teacher reduction. In order to pay that two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars payment for this year. The thought, and we have to do this all with Baird, so I don't want you, this is far from being, you know, finalized or anything. But we just did an initial look at on some of the things that we could reduce or not take out of the budget to pay that long amount. For next year, but what it would look like, though, moving forward is that payment likely would have to come out of different pots of money each year. You know, so for example, one of the ideas was rather than buying Chromebooks every year, we could go to Chromebooks every other year. So those are some of the things, and that was suggested by staff as well, so those are some of the things we're looking at, so. Just to do a ballpark payment on the loan, we just, we did that, so if you were to prove. For me to get the application and whatever amount you guys decide, even if you went with the higher amounts, nothing you're obligated to or anything like that. And the next time we would come back, I would share with you the application, the process, and then we would have more concrete numbers. I know Tom wanted specific cut numbers that we would work with, with Baird, we just haven't met with them yet, we meet with them in. July, mid-July.
Yeah, he was out, you guys inside.
So all I would need tonight is just an approval to, to submit the application and an amount.
Do we know a difference between the two amounts? Cause I mean, it's a lot, but like, I know we know the difference, but I mean, like. Is a, a million gonna be enough for us or do we really need to go for that two million?
I don't think a million would be enough, it would certainly help, um, we feel very comfortable, we. And now you can speak to this, that the payment is definitely reasonable there that we could do it.
The two million dollar payment?
What's that?
The two million or the one million?
One million, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That's a payment repayment of one thirty-two.
So you think we can do, we, you think we'd be able to swing, at least for this year, the two million is what you're kind of saying?
See, that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, I know.
Did this and even if we went for that two million dollar amount, once we get back and circle around with Baird, I will tell you, yes, for sure. But we just did an initial, um, budget, just ballparking without Baird.
And you said with the cuts, that would be coming back to us, what you guys think we should cut? Right. Make those payments?
So just for example, okay.
Payments, but.
In general.
So.
Get back on budget.
Think of it this way, um, let's say we had, uh, we're short-term borrowing like one point seven. At times during the year, if we never got below owing like three hundred grand. For the whole year, that means we were over budget by like three hundred grand, okay? So three hundred on top of the one point seven gives us two million, alright? Now, we were looking at with all of the restructuring from the staff and a bunch of other things. We're already looking at saving roughly around three fifty coming into this next year. However, if we're still saving that, but we're still overspending by three hundred. We need to find where we're overspending at, which Baird is supposed to be doing, so we can get our budget back in line. Uh, because even though we might have found the money to make the payment, it doesn't mean we've. Found the leak in the boat, so to speak, um, so that's what I'm wanting from. Kevin and Laura and Baird is basically to come up with how much we need to cut to basically stop the leaking. And be able to actually build back towards the fund or just be solvent. Where we don't have to worry about going to short-term lending, because with the one million. We're still gonna end up going to short-term lending the way things are right now.
Which isn't unusual for schools to do like one or two times during the year, that is very typical. But doing it every month of the year.
I don't know if it's very typical, about seventy percent of school districts do it without any short-term borrowing. It's just over twenty-five percent that actually engage in it all the time, so, um, we're not. It's not like every school does it, though it's okay, cause.
No, it's not.
It's like getting a credit card to pay off a credit card the way we're going and it's not working out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, we could use this and as a way of. Basically becoming our own borrower once again, as opposed to having to go to short-term borrowing all the time, which is. Normally how the fund balance would be working for a school, they would pull from it and then add back to it as the year went. And we basically don't have a fund balance anymore or very little of one, so this would basically become our new fund balance. That we would draw off of for our payments, but we won't be going to the bank all the time. And having to be in debt to them constantly, now mind you, we're gonna be in debt to. A state bank for the next ten years, um, but once that's done, that money is all the schools. Once it's paid, it's all the schools at that point.
If we don't end up borrowing again.
Exactly. That's why.
Free loans right now, I'm not convinced.
Well, that's why we need to look at how much we're actually overspending to be able to make this a reality.
And the loans we have out right now aren't all towards operational.
Right.
So it's, we might have a potential savings on the roof and boiler, we not, may not spend all of what the referendum was. But we can't take that money and put it in fund balance, it's not allowed, our options are to pay off the loan or to find the other capital projects. That were allowable in the referendum and the playground loan also was not part of, right, so they're just separate.
But if we could do anything towards those, we'd be able to lower our payments towards those, which would help the overall budget in itself. Um. So yeah, it's, this is not a do all solution. We need to make cuts even if we go this route. But It's a potential route where we wouldn't be looking at going to a bank for money All the time, constantly, and we'd be able to build the school's credit back up via this method.
How will it affect the school's credit with the situation now being that we aren't able to borrow, like, community bank isn't able to Fund right now that last referendum or doesn't choose to, I should say, um. Wait, what does this do to our credit limit?
Our limit?
Not our limit, our credit rating.
Our rating, a B plus plus. Whoever you wanna take that, typically I think A is expected. But I think this does help our credit rating to have at least some sort of plan, cause The first thing they always ask you is, you know, do you have a forecast model? Do you have a? And that's, those are things we didn't have before, so we're making steps in, in that direction, um. So that's where we're at from a credit standpoint, um. It's, I mean, there are districts in the C range, um, but I think we would wanna be better than that. Certainly, we were in the A range prior, prior to that fund balance draw, the last one. But this doesn't obligate us to anything, if we just Apply for it, have an amount that we want, then we bring Debbie back into the mix and we start planning from, from that point. So the sheet that I had that had the, the process on it was just, this was the next step in the process.
So, um, aside from this, do we have an idea what those final numbers are gonna be yet? Has Baird given you an idea when the forecast is gonna start pulling in?
We have a meeting scheduled with them. July seventh.
Okay, cause The next meeting, we might have to make a decision on this, and I think we'd all like to have the information as to what
Yeah.
Our budget's gonna be looking like before we sign up for this, find out we can't afford this either, you know?
Well, and the other thing is, if we apply and it's denied, it's a done deal. So, I mean, we don't have any guarantee that that application is even gonna result in funding, do we?
I think so, I think we do.
We do have a guarantee.
There any cost of what?
Not the, uh, no.
My other question is, is what does that be, whatever B C P Ls do?
It is the Board of Commissions of Public Ways, thank you.
Well, I make a motion to Go ahead and fill out the application and go for Whatever amount you think is gonna best suit us to stay above water. And then, once you guys get the full numbers from Your meeting in July, bring it back to the board and We go from there with the numbers that they come back to us with.
But I, I wanted you guys as a board to decide on the amount, I don't think.
Did Debbie give any option of doing the million now and then in a year or two, doing another million if needed?
She didn't, but I, I felt like she said if you apply for the two million, you don't have to use all of it.
Well, that's, this is it, it's a credit card, right, like. So why not go for the two million?
Exactly, that's where I'm.
And we just wanted to come back to you, next year, we feel like we can make the payment. But we wanna confirm that with Baird, I don't want you to take that to heart right now, I wonder.
And not that I want to try to hold anything away from the public, but that above the million dollar mark Does allow a thirty day time period for the public to weigh in and petition.
We publish a paper and then those next steps.
And so if, if we do the two million, We have to go through that process. If we do the one million, we do not have to go through that.
But if we do the one million and it's not enough, then we.
That's why I'm saying.
We know the million is not enough, we know it's not.
So I would go with.
And we did, we did do a state trust fund petition before, it's not like we haven't done it, I mean.
Yep.
I say go for the application for the two million. That's my.
I'll second it.
Okay, so just to clarify, we have a motion Uh, to apply for the two million dollar Uh, operational loan through the B C P L. Um, by Kelly and seconded by Corey. Of course, any further decision on it will be based on whatever numbers we get back. Um, but this time, this, this is just for the application process to continue onward for now.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries.
In the meantime, do we get a copy of the full budget? Does the board and go through it? A line by line item?
Me, she will bring the budget forth, and that's what we're working with.
Is that what happens in July?
Typically, yes.
To, for the board?
Yeah.
And last year it was getting added into Sky.
So here's the other thing, I just wanna make this really clear. So we put together a budget in July to the best of our ability, and everything that we do is based on the previous year. Those are the only numbers, the, the best numbers we have, and some best guesses based on some expenditures that might be coming. That's, that's typically what we do. The funding and legislature doesn't submit funding
We don't know that type.
Till October. Now, I don't know how many other businesses run like that, not many. So that's sometimes putting the budget together in July isn't the same as what the revenue is in October, just so. That's a big problem. Sometimes.
Well, you guys don't know, like, what comes from the federal land trust fund?
No, that's random.
That's just random.
We have a budgeted amount that we use on the previous year. Everything she starts with is on the previous year, and that's recommended. Most districts will say that's where you start.
Does the budget show like what we pay administration? So, is it all itemized out?
It is not, no, it is not, it is a How do you wanna explain it? How do you wanna say?
It's, it's, it's. Well, it is, I mean, it is all. So the one that, like, you guys see is like a summary, cause Actually, my budget is five hundred something.
I was just a hundred.
So.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Um.
We've been put, having her put, like, Katie's been working, we're kinda like, we're quite, and Tom, like, the last few things, like lately, it's You've kind of been giving us spreadsheets and seeing, so we're able to see things to like break it down For us to understand. I think with Bear too, they're gonna, you know, hopefully next month, it's all more.
And Bear is working, putting that into a, and they have more Easier to lead.
And the reason it's so complicated, tell me if I'm wrong, is that Like, a staff members' position, some of it comes from this pocket, some of it comes from this grant. The rest of it's paid out of this account, and so that makes it Much harder, and they're goofy configurations, right, of how those get linked together.
And it's really hard because there are a lot of things that would be considered not a huge amount of money. But when you add all those little things up, and I just made a request for records on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards to see what we pay them. And this school year alone, we paid them seventeen thousand dollars, over seventeen thousand dollars. And the information, the meeting the other night, when I contacted other agencies, was not overly accurate, and I did contact him and discuss that with them. But what are we paying different agencies and organizations? That we're, we're not getting our value for? And if, if, you know, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards wants to align with the Wisconsin District Administrators Association, Which is what it looks like it's doing, then is that going to benefit our school board? Or is it not? So that's why some of those smaller cost items Are big, seventeen thousand dollars in my budget's quite a bit. While it's not in a two million dollar budget, how many other items are there that are between fifteen and Forty thousand dollars that we can actually look at eliminating?
So there are legal fees within that W A S P, and they are half the price of any other attorney. That's part of the service you get for the firm.
Yes, and legal fees were again forty-two percent over budget. I mean, there's gotta be a way to reduce those costs.
Well, I think I think as far, I mean, we're starting to get off the topic.
Yeah.
So I think, I'm not against the board having a whole separate meeting. Where we would potentially talk about the budget, once it's prepared and go over things, I think that probably would be The best route to go. So once they, uh, Kevin, Laura and Baird get done with all that, Let us know and we'll schedule something from there, so.
I feel like we'll be in a better position in case the public petitions against us, if we actually know Where we stand.
Yeah. So, moving on, uh, was there anything else in, in regards to just the loan application? Okay. Moving on, policy three forty-five point five, Science School Act Twenty promotion policy and thirty Three forty-five point five exhibit Act Twenty family notification policy.
I make a motion that we accept it.
Prove it.
Prove it.
Except I guess. Alright, we've got a motion By Jamie, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Elementary student handbook for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Make a motion that we accept it.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed. Middle school, high school student handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
A motion to accept it.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Certified staff handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed.
No.
Support staff handbook, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I make a motion to accept that.
I'll second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Kelly, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Directors, administrators and district office staff handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Kelly, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Snack account setup. Uh.
Can you approve it?
Yeah, we just need to approve it. This would be an account that people could donate money towards.
Okay.
Um, for.
It's snack and the class of twenty-nine.
Well, there's two, it's an H and an I though, so on that same sheet, but they're two different line items. So with the snack account, is that, this, remind me, is that separate than The extra lunches, or is that the same as the extra lunches?
No.
It's all gonna be, so how are you gonna divide up? If I give you money and I'm like, this is a hundred dollars towards track snacks.
I have.
Versus Tom's fifty dollars. Okay, just, yeah, just giving you another headache. I mean, I think it's needed, but
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit tricky with.
Yeah, so this is gonna be, cause we're basically solvent with Our lunch program, meaning everyone's all caught up to date, there's no one that still owes money on it or anything like that. So at this point, there are still kids that, you know, would want maybe a second lunch. Or maybe there's, uh, wanting to do healthy snacks or something like that. This would be a fund where the public could donate to it to help get those kids those extra lunches that they want them, or to get snacks. For the different classes, stuff like that.
Wow, in the past, people donated money to bring up lunch debt, and so now there isn't a need to make up for the lunch debt.
Right, so this is created in lieu of debt, so. All those in favor, or sorry.
Have we voted? I'll make a motion to approve the snack, the snack account setup, account number, I don't know. Can we do them together though, cause it's an H and an I? They're two separate line items.
They're just on the same piece of paper.
Yeah.
You're saying. Okay.
I think we, we need to do them separate, right? So the snack account, I make a motion to approve the snack account setup.
Okay. So we have a motion by Jamie, seconded by Kelly for the snack account setup. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed.
I'll make a motion to accept the class of twenty twenty-nine activity accounts of. I have a question, but I'll have someone else second it.
I'll second it.
Good. We have a motion by Jamie, seconded by Corey for the class of twenty twenty-nine activity count setup, any discussion?
So is this something new? I don't feel like we've ever had this oppose, or shown to us prior.
Oh, set up for the other.
We just never really approved, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious, and then, so with them doing stuffs as eighth graders, how did that work? Like, do they, do, were you just kinda keeping it set, like, cause it's the same group, right?
Yep.
Cause they were doing fundraisers this year to go on an eighth grade class trip, now they're gonna be freshmen. So how, how did you, just kinda curiosity, not to put you on the spot.
They started out in seventh and eighth period of
Okay. Once you go to high school. Gotcha, okay.
Do we have to vote to close accounts after those classes graduate and where do the extra funds go?
Some of them.
Do they decide?
Pay out and they take it to a primer bank.
And on a class.
Lately, I haven't had to do that, so.
They don't have any money, or do we not, just sit there?
Our kids this year, when they went to Miles America, each kid got paid out fifty dollars cash for shopping.
And isn't sometimes that money held on for like future, um? Yes, I'm like.
Oh, so the accounts just stay.
Jessica graduated in twenty fourteen and she was on the list, so she needed to pull the money out And set up another contact.
Oh, they're supposed to set up a.
They sit there.
That they do that, but.
To pull it out.
Do we need to send out maybe a lot, I mean, I have to give you more workload, but maybe send up letters. Of course, you probably don't have contacts for, cause wasn't, wasn't usually like the president, who is it?
Yeah.
Or.
It was the class advisor, like.
Certain people.
The class advisor and just said, hey, you guys can probably.
Yeah, I mean.
I think I was president in all my years, except senior year, I'm like, I'm out, I don't want responsibilities.
See, maybe that's something you can.
And some of them should add and probably be combined with other accounts. But you guys have to.
Right, well, if you bring forth the ones you think should be combined.
Yeah, how far back do some of this potentially go? Like, my grandpa used to have reunions every year and they were pushing, I don't know how many.
Alright, so yeah, let's get into that. In the meantime, we have the motion on the floor. We have approval, we have a second. Anything else in regards to this motion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Alright. Um, looking for a motion to accept the resignation for the grant writer position from Rachel McNally.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Rachel.
Her grant writer, I'll second that.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jamie. Any further discussion?
Is that posted? Do we have someone internally?
Somebody did express interest.
Internally, okay. Can't remember where we left that.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of all of these titles of Rayanna Johnson.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Katie. To accept the resignation, the middle school, high school science teacher, student council volleyball coach, senior high assistant, Rayanna John, Rayanna Johnson. Johnston, all those, or any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of boys' basketball head coach Jesse Gilbertson.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Kelly, seconded by Jamie, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Craig Hall for football junior high assistant.
Second that.
Or Aaron Carter.
We got a motion by Polly, seconded by Eric to accept Craig Hall's football junior high assistant resignation, although, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Looking for a motion Takes, uh, to hire middle school baseball assistant Trevor Tex. Takes uh to hire middle school baseball assistant Trevor Tex.
Make that motion.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Eric.
Is this? For this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, this season is almost over. Yeah, it's for that one.
But yeah, Jordan. Resigned.
Right.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Looking for a motion to hire middle school, high school, social studies.
To hire, uh is it Colin Williams?
I'll second that.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Make a motion to hire sped teacher Elizabeth Hart.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed.
Make a motion to hire IT coordinator Benjamin.
Bonick.
Kay.
Bonick. I'll second that.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Katie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed.
Make a motion to hire cross-country middle school. At and.
High school assistant, yeah.
Assistant Macy Bentley.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jamie, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Okay, so this came up. Today, I was brought to Eric's attention, so I'll let you go into this.
The guys doing the front entrance need some answers for details, uh color of the railing. Black or green, uh the deep, the decorative wall, it'll be two colors. Match the outside of the building will be tan and dark brown, they need to decide, us, us decide. It's tan on bottom, dark brown on top. Or vice versa. And then what same with those walls, if we wanted to step down halfway down the ramp. Or stay same level. The whole way.
Little contractor Corey, what would look better?
I talked to them already and they, they. They think that going with the tan on bottom, dark on top will look better.
Is that what matches the brick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then stepping down will look better and black will look better.
Yeah.
And I agree with everyone.
I agree with that, yeah. With likelihood that the green would match the doors.
And the railing, the railing would be black.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's your thought?
They heard black and greens, but they wanna know what we want. I think black would.
I think it'd be easier to keep it tough, tough, touch up and stuff too.
Can we just, can we just get that, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we get done writing here, so let's.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll do it. I'll put forth the motion for the outside entrance, uh. Coloring to be tan on the bottom. Dark on the top, on the. Uh. Ramp wall. And that there be a half step down on those ramp walls. And. That the railings be black.
Tiny flap.
So.
That was everything?
Yep. Right?
And then so you'll get in touch with them?
I'll talk to them tomorrow.
We'll have these in the minutes.
Uh, too late, or you already did, sorry. So any further discussion?
Becky, you have a question?
Simple motion.
You had a question?
Uh, my question is, is, are you guys gonna end up, I don't know where the ramp is coming out at, but are you guys gonna end up having to move the curb cutout? On the road? I know, but the one that goes at a huge diagonal right now.
They're not, they're both gonna go like straight and then towards the sidewalk.
So like the one. For the ramp on this side. The cutout might look like it's gonna like go this way when you have to get off, or is the cutout gonna go at the end of the ramp? Like, is the sidewalk gonna have to be?
With the sidewalk.
I think that would be the village decision.
So, they're not touching the sidewalk, that's on the village.
Well, they'd let you do it, but you'd have to pay the cost, but. I was just wondering, cause I was wondering.
The curb cutout currently only meets up with the crosswalk. If we added another, it would be a different painted crop, they'd be like a Y crosswalk to get through.
No, I just assume maybe the, the one crosswalk would go straight, more straight versus at a diagonal. So I was just curious, I was just looking at the angle myself, so that's all.
Maybe when it comes time to replace the curb in the future, we could look at changing where, you know, make that crosswalk straight.
That was, that was hilarious, but that was just on the top of my head when I was driving by.
Alright, so we have the motion, uh it's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright. Meeting calendars, committee as a whole.
I would like to make a suggestion that we just make this a standing meeting, the third Monday of the month. Followed by the fourth Monday of the month being the full board meeting.
I'm not against that for next month, for sure.
I'd like to go back to our regular. Meetings like we used to do, have our small committee meetings. Because it's easier to make meetings and have to get all seven of us to. Their calendars to match.
I made this suggestion.
I just am for the month of July.
Yeah.
Typically, we do defer reports, typically that's the administrator month, oh, not me, but typically there's based on the contracts. The other thing I was wondering, would you be willing to, um? Have the regular meeting at the end of the month on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth versus Monday, the twenty-eighth. I, I was gonna go on vacation and leave after the twenty-first, cause I figured that's when. We have, uh. Yeah.
That actually works better for me.
I just, and you don't have me, I'm just asking. Can, can, that's fine, I'll make it work.
That Tuesday works.
I'm fine with the monthly being on the twenty-ninth.
I make a motion that we have the July monthly meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
At five still, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and then. For the committee of the whole. Uh. Fourteen through the twenty-first. Does either one work better for anyone?
I think we had said it was easier for budgeting to not have it happen in the middle, and that's why going to that.
The twenty-first is better for the.
Well, we may end up needing to do another special meeting after you guys meet with bear.
Yeah.
Before the cow anyways, so.
So, committee of the whole for the twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to have the committee of the whole on the twenty-first.
Don't have to make motions for our meetings.
Okay. Then I don't make a motion.
I'm writing it down, so.
What time was the cow?
Four o'clock as always, or thus far, I should say.
We're at the twenty-first?
Yes.
Wait, did you guys want it at five, Katie, Polly?
Well, I like them to be consistent, but. I would love to just all have scheduled out for the rest of the year, so. I'd like the times to be the same for this, for the same reason, yeah.
So we had at four, we've had at four thus far, so.
You can't do four o'clock, I'm in college right now.
I prefer, if the morning's gonna be at five, the committee of the whole is at five, it also gives public opportunity to be here if they work until. If they don't get off work before that.
I'm fine with five if everyone else is.
But are we gonna have the?
So five, I'm on the twenty.
Comment during the cow.
We don't have to.
How long are these? Okay, I won't be here for the full meeting. Then, if they last that long. I can be here for part of that.
Yeah, five.
The twenty-first at five.
Yep. Anything that any of us can do, I mean, it's. There's seven of us, there's bound to be conflicts here and there, I mean, it's just. Yeah, it happens, so we just. Do what we can. Alright. Looking for approval of the bills for the cycle of May twenty-fourth.
I did go through this with Laura, just so that it's publicly on here, on page one, there's a concrete work entrance of twenty-one thousand thirty dollars. And on page two, that same payment is coming up again, and she said it was just the way that. It hit one account and then the check came in and we're utilizing those uh referendum dollars to do it. But the original amount did have to come out of us, so we had to repay ourselves. So it looks like those are in there twice.
The same thing with the earth energy, what was that total? Cause that's in there three times, was it fifteen hundred dollars or close to? Cause there's a payment on six-ten and then there was another two of the same, I thought. Around that twenty-one. If I looked at this correctly.
Yeah.
So I did two separate payments for earth energy, one for the four thousand members. Four thousand six.
Six hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, that shows up three times though, there's a six, a six-nine payment, six-nine payment of four. Four thousand six hundred twenty-five to earth energy twice, and then what was the first page of the one for earth energy?
First one was on page two.
Two. And that was another one for four thousand six hundred and twenty-five, so that's on there three times. Two is dated, six-nine and one's dated six-ten.
Two is six-nine, no.
It's, it's on page four. It's the date, the date six.
That's moving it to fund forty-nine. So if you look at the total page in the back. It breaks them out. Between the funds. So that, the. Um, concrete work and earth energy got moved to fund forty-nine. I had to pay them out of our general account first, cause we didn't have the rep around them. Money yet, but I had to move them. Over. Page the codes and move them over to fund forty-nine. And then when I got the check from the bank for the referendum. Then I applied that to the fund ten accounts, so those are cleared out.
We're not considered to pay.
They were pressing on the amount for the, they wanted a partial payment. To get started.
Right, and earth, so earth energy got two payments of four thousand six hundred twenty-five, so the bill was split in half. I remember there was discussion of it, I was just unclear with the way this looks, okay. Thanks for that clarification, I do have other questions. What's this almost eight thousand dollars that we're paying Frederick School District for wrestling? Is that for high school or is that for middle school, or is that all of it?
That's LS, or synergy.
I understand that, but that's co-op, is that with uniforms, like, cause we don't have, like, I'm just, do we have a breakdown? Cause that's a lot. Like, we don't pay any of our programs here that amount, and that's going to a co-op. So that just seems like a really high amount.
We'd pay that amount, like, for hockey, it's per kid.
So, well, the hockey's on here, so now we're paying luck, luck is overseeing the hockey program?
They, yeah, whoever switches, whoever the athletic director is in charge, they, they. Switch.
But we have way more students involved in wrestling than we do.
Typically, they're all based on a per pupil.
Yep, and the gymnastics is a thousand bucks because that's just the bare minimum, we also play girl.
Do we have in?
We don't have anyone in gymnastics, we don't have anyone in girls hockey.
I don't think we pay anything for girl hockey, I think we just sign that we're part of it, cause I don't think, because we haven't had anything, I feel like last time he brought it to us.
You're right, that one might not be a payment, but we have to continue to be part of those co-ops to keep the number between boy sports and girl sports equal.
We have tons of kids in wrestling and all practices, we use. Frederick's gym, Frederick's equipment, all.
So are they billing us separate? I mean, it'd be great to actually see. That all broke down.
You send me an email tomorrow.
It is.
What's that?
It's either if you send me an email tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
I can't get in this thing right now.
The only thing I would be curious about is if, if any of those fees entail. Um. Anything below, uh, high school or middle school, just out of. Curiosity, cause I know they'll start to get lumped in.
It shouldn't be, cause I know that goes to Bulldog Club.
Covered the high school portion for many years, and the schools did.
That's why I'm just questioning, is this wrestling just for high school or is this middle school too? So if it's middle school and like, it makes more sense, but if it's just high school, it seems like a lot.
So you mean it's middle school?
It's high, it's high school and middle school, cause they practice together, everything is together for wrestling.
What's that? And then I have a question on the Northwest Technical, can you, I'm assuming this is for their, um. Alternative diplomas, but can we, like, can you explain again to me how, how, why we get the cost of that?
There are students.
Okay, so we just have to make sure that, that, that they graduate versus, since they didn't do it in regular here?
Correct, there are students and they have alternate diplomas from our school. And they're still our students when they go, it's just another place that they go to finish up their degree.
Oh, yeah, or they can't do it. Um, we are actually required to, if a student is designated as at-risk and they ask to attend that program, the school is required. And is that separate from ALC or is that a program ALC includes? That's separate, it's totally different programs.
Yeah.
Correct.
Cause our ALC kids can get a regular diploma. Okay. They can. Okay. What, we don't have a teacher for this student.
What's the difference with the cost, is that's, cause the kids had to make up extra credits?
Takes them.
So, we have a breakdown of what a student, like, what we pay a student individually for here? Or that would be based on what classes they take and have to figure out how much we pay each teacher.
Isn't the breakdown right there with each student's name?
Yeah, I was just curious, like, which is, like, if we're, I'm looking at this and this is how much these students cost, like, what's a typical se- senior going through? Our regular school, what we pay on a breakdown?
And so I can give that to you.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I think the last one was eleven. Seven, eleven thousand, seven hundred, that's what we get.
That's what we get, yeah, I'm just wondering what, if that's like the actual.
And for that program, like, let's say they already have all their math credits, they don't have to do the math portion, but let's say they're missing two. Science or two social studies, then they have to go there and complete that portion, that's why it's buried. And then some kids can do it in a day, some kids need two, three, four, five weeks. Is it online?
No, no. That, and I think also part of your prey differences, um, the, and I don't have it in front of me. But there's also where we, they go down to Rice Lake, and then we also have the boot camps, which are closer, like in Shell Lake or. Actually, they had one at the Tribe too. Um, and that, so I think that might be part of your cost difference, I can't guarantee that, but I do know that there's kids that have done both.
I'm just curious, I don't think we, anybody, um. Had made a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Kelly. To approve the bills for the cycle May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, we took care of board signature items already, okay? And, yep, go ahead.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Eric to adjourn, all those in favor?
Sorry, I was late, I didn't message Lisa, I don't think I got the memo that Lisa wasn't gonna be here today, she may have said it and I missed it. It's everyone.
I didn't.
I'm just curious, yeah, it's, yeah, I'll.
Well, it's the wrestling, and then I was curious to like the breakdown of like. How much it costs a school for like the senior, like, if a senior graduated here, how much should we pay, like? How much does it cost, like, all four years or even the senior year versus what we pay in Northwood Tech to get like the same thing? That make sense? Kinda, but it's gonna, I don't know if it's gonna, if it even matters though, Kevin, cause it's probably gonna be. A different for everyone anyways, and then I think about some of these. If they did three years here and it was just their last semester, cause I think that one, it was basically her last semester, and it was what cost us twelve hundred dollars. Would it have cost us twelve hundred dollars had she stayed here? That rest of that semester, probably, cause you have, you have, you know, I don't know, you. I don't know, it'd be tough, having, cause you almost have to take the percentage of our teachers' time, divide by. The s- the students that they have and it's. Yeah, I don't know that it's even, I think it's too much, but. I, I, if, it is, in my head, I'm just kinda like going. We're gonna like, are we paying more to have these, I mean, I get we need to do it.
She told me she was meeting with you last.
Some of these kids, maybe. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.